I would remind you to please silence your cell phones while we conduct our business. Because this meeting is being livestreamed, we don't need any interference as we have the meeting. We do have, we do need to, want to thank the Biloxi Schools and the Mr. Brewdrove for allowing us to use his beautiful facility this morning. I said, I kind of feel like we're at the United Nations or something. It's just gorgeous facility and they have been so accommodating in helping get set up and address any issues. So we're certainly thankful to him and grateful for his assistance. We do have one new board member today and we're also happy that we have a full board again. But Ms. Mary Werner down here on the end is our newest appointee and we're glad to have her with us. And as I said, we're happy to have a full board again. I'm going to call the meeting to order now and we will have our pledge and our invocation. Our pledge will be led by Mr. Matt Miller and our invocation will be led by Mr. Glenn East.
Please bow to me. Most precious heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together. Please guide our deliberations, our discussions and our talks so at the end of the day, we're making decisions for the best for the children of the state of Mississippi. Thank you for your guidance, thank you for your leadership, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
We also want to recognize this morning, we have two student representatives who serve on this board. And Ms. Amy Zhang is with us this morning. She's been on the board for a year and has been joining us by Zoom each month. But today we have her in person and we're happy to have her with us. We have our rising junior representative, Micah Hill from Laurel High School. We expect to join us perhaps, but they both bring a wonderful perspective to our board and give a lot of good input on what their peers are saying and the issues that they're dealing with. So we're glad to have Amy here with us in person today. I didn't say, Amy is from Starford, but she goes to the Mississippi School for Math and Science. Okay, we have to press pause a minute. Livestreaming has dropped off, so we have to fix that technical difficulty here. Our first item for action is approval of minutes of the junior's representative, the final interview and the minutes of the budget meeting we held on June 16, 2021 and the minutes of the June 17, 2021 board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If so, I'll entertain a motion now. We're hearing none. On the consent agenda, are there any items that members would like to pull out to discuss individually on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. We will move forward with the agenda as presented and now we'll have our report from the state superintendent.
Motion to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, forgot to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now.
All right, thank you.
State Superintendent.
Thank you. So since we met the last time, I've conducted two interviews. Y'all Politics interviewed me and that was on, you can get their regular email. The recording of that interview is there. And also the JT Talk Show invited me. This was the first time I had been on that talk show. And it was really a great opportunity to really share a lot of the really good news that's going on in Mississippi. And so I always appreciate the opportunity to do that. I've conducted two presentations. The Achievement School District had a leadership retreat and they asked me to come and speak as a kickoff for that. And they're excited about that. A lot of, they had a great week planned, really, really pleased when I saw the agenda. And then Dr. Dobbs and I were asked as a team to come to a national meeting of the public health and school leaders. And the whole focus was on reopening schools and then how do we keep schools open safely? So this was a national presentation that we did. And then our telehealth, teletherapy work group is still working. We're getting closer and closer to finalizing all of that. And I'm, I call it my other full-time job. The National Assessment Governing Board is, has got a, has a, the chair. Governor Barber put together a work group to work on the reading framework, which is going to be used then to guide the development of the NATE assessment in reading, starting in 2026. And that has consumed a tremendous amount of time, but very worthwhile. And last, just some exciting news. The state chief from Alaska called. He's been following obviously our progress over the years. And he said, would you be willing to come and speak to all of my superintendents? We gather once a year with a big meeting. And then would you be willing then to meet with our senate and our house as well? Because they're working on legislation, so, and we'll pay for it. So Pete and I are going to be heading to Alaska. We're heading first to Juneau for the meeting with the superintendents. And then we're heading from Juneau to Anchorage to meet with the senate and the house around the legislation that Mississippi has put together. And he's also trying to arrange some time for me to meet with the governor if the governor's schedule agrees with that. So it, we were with a couple legislators the other night and they could not have been more excited. And for us to be, for another state to reach out and say, please come because we are so far behind and Mississippi has achieved so much. So they were just really proud to hear that we're representing Mississippi. And I'll let you know more because the trip is next week. So when we meet for August, I'll fill you in on how that went. But it's, it's an exciting opportunity for our state. And that ends my report.
Good, thank you, that is exciting. I, I have had a couple of small meetings this last month with different people who have had questions or needed information. But the biggest thing I did was Tuesday morning, I spoke to the state superintendents briefly to bring greetings from the department and from this board and to talk a little bit about what's going on. I did highlight the extraordinary effort that the department did in distributing, in ordering and loading and distributing devices back in the fall because I think that's something that we should take great pride in, quite frankly. And it never got a lot of press. And so I wanted to make sure that they knew the effort that went into getting them their devices in three months' time. And then we talked about the restart of school and what that's going to look like. So it's, I was happy to do that and there was a nice crowd there. And so it's always good to bring greetings from this board. Our next item on the agenda is our student representatives. And Amy, I'm going to let you go first. You're probably going to have to speak up a little bit so that they can hear you. You have such a nice soft voice.
Yes ma'am, can you all hear me?
We can, can you take your mask off for just a second? And there you go, good.
Can you hear me?
That's much better.
Awesome. Today I will just be talking about my commitments over the summer. The first thing that I've been doing is humanities outreach at my school, MSMS. We have an outreach program run by both students and teachers, which is aimed at getting more students from all across the state of Mississippi to be aware of MSMS's well-rounded system. Because not only do we support STEM interests, but we also want to support humanities interests through classes and clubs and extracurriculars. I have been working in a group that is focusing on economics outreach. And at our last meeting, we finalized our lesson timelines for middle school and high school classes that we want to hold. And we've been creating lesson plans and worksheets since that meeting. Other groups are targeting topics such as creative writing, English, art and history. And I'm really excited to start teaching lessons and doing outreach once school begins. I think this is a really great opportunity for students all across the state. I've also been continuing my internship with the Institute for Youth and Policy. And this week I submitted an article on the economics of climate change. And it should be published within a week and I'm looking forward to writing another article for next month. And lastly, I just wanted to say that I'm grateful to be here in person and have the opportunity to speak to everyone face to face. I'm really happy to be here today and I look forward to serving in this upcoming year as well. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Tell us again where your articles are going to be published, I didn't catch that.
It is at the Institute for Youth and Policy and it'll be published on their website.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Amy is an example that school doesn't stop and work doesn't stop when, in May, when she finishes her academic work. She stays busy all the time, so thank you for your report. None of our subcommittees met this month, so we don't have any reports from that. So we'll move into the discussion, action part of our agenda. The first item is to begin the administrative procedures process to revise Mississippi Administrative Code 7.3, 7.4.8, state policy, state board policy 74, chapter 74, rule 74.8. And the long and short of that is the university-based programs.
Good morning. So we are bringing forward for discussion and approval this morning, this policy to start public comments again. We've made several revisions to this policy as a result of the recent public comment period. As a matter of reference for our new board members, we actually brought this forward to the board in May for discussion, approval. Since that time, we've met with a number of legislators, visited with the university-based programs, even as recently as last week, on a call with some of the programs in the state, received a number of comments from that public comments period. And we're going back to the beginning of the process. Basically, the public comments process is working as it's supposed to. We've received feedback. The changes that we're making as a result of some of that recent feedback are substantive in nature as we try to be responsive to the comments that we've gotten. Nothing has changed regarding the status of the programs and IDEA funds and the flow of those funds to districts to enter into MOUs for services to students. But rather we've eliminated some duplicative language and tried to clarify some language around teacher unit calculation, provide some flexibility there for programs based on their need, as well as clarify some language around MAAP funds for students that are enrolled in districts. Ultimately, we're trying to ensure that we're compliant with federal law and at the same time, allowing districts to be involved in the programming and placement of students that they're responsible for in their district. So given the nature of the clarifications that we're making, we are requesting approval to begin the process again for approval, to start the APA process. So glad to take any questions or if you've got, you know, want more clarity. Robin Lamontis and her team have been deeply involved in this work over the last month and be glad to address those questions you may have.
All right, are there any questions of Dr. Oakley or Ms. Lamontis about this? Otherwise, we will entertain a motion that we go back, go out for public comment. Do we have a motion to approve that process?
I have a few comments I'd like to make.
Okay, go ahead.
I have been, since I got on this board, I've been involved in this process. Can everybody hear me?
Well, we're working on that. That's the reason, they're bringing another speaker in because I was having a difficult time hearing people.
Okay, well, I'll try to be as loud as I can. I'm also hearing myself back, so that's kind of weird too. And I'm not used to the bright lights in my face either. I have been involved in this and had comments and conversations with many of the stakeholders involved in this, these university-based programs. I had a great conversation with Robin by Zoom for about an hour and a half. And as I see this, it's, first of all, I don't see, MDE is not the enemy here. It's, Robin got involved in, specifically Robin's not the enemy. Robin has got involved in this process and it's sort of like when you uncover a rock to figure something out, there's another creature that comes out. And that has been an ongoing process with this. We even discovered during our conversation, she had just found out about the per pupil dollars, which we still don't have an answer on. And that could be money that is funded to these programs that they're not currently getting. So I'm very glad that we're at this point in the process to where there is another APA going out. Because this seems, this to me seems to be an evolving animal. We don't have all the answers yet. And to me, I'm glad we're here because I don't think we're ready to create revisions to a policy until we get all the answers. That being said, there are also, I've also learned there are several different stakeholders in this process that need to engage and get involved. It's not just MDE, it's not just university-based programs. It's also a small piece is the federal government. The local school districts who utilize these programs need to be involved. They need to understand and be aware and ask questions. The other portion that needs to be involved in this is our legislatures. University-based programs, as I have discovered, are creatures of statute. And it's very specific of how they're created and how they're funded. And there's specific language that dictates to MDE of what they're supposed to do. It seems that all of these, there are several pieces to this and all of these players have to come together to create a policy that works. The funding has to be, these university-based programs shouldn't be worried every year about where their funding is coming from. And I think the legislature can take a big part of that burden off of them by giving everybody a little bit more clarity of how these things are supposed to be funded. That being said, at the end of the day, to me, anybody who has seen any of these university-based programs know they work for these children. The two programs that I'm most familiar with, the USM, deal with children who have severe difficulties. And the progress that they make with these kids, even taking them as young as, you know, birthed to, to where they can become productive members of society, it's incredible. And for what they do, for what their cost per pupil is, if you try to do that privately, it's astronomical what those charges would be. That, that being said, we just, to me, everybody needs to keep working together to come up with a solution. And if you're a stakeholder in this, you need to get involved. So, and to the extent I can help, I'm more than willing to help. But we just, we need to keep moving forward with this. The last thing I'll say on this is the one big concern I have with the change on this right now is timing. School starts, for my kids, Lamar County starts next Friday. And any interruption in the services that these kids get in any of these university-based programs, to me, would be a problem. So we need, to me, within that mindset, with any of these changes, we need to keep that in mind to where the students that are part of these programs, nothing interferes with them moving forward academically for this school year.
I would, I would like to concur with Matt's comments regarding this. I've heard from a number of districts and would need to ask Dr. Oakley, because I couldn't hear you real well. What are we going back for APA again for? What did you say?
So the, the nature of the changes to the policy are substantive enough that we need to restart the process.
Okay, and so what does that timeline look like going forward?
So that timeline would be a 30-day APA with subsequent board approval.
And so if we have subsequent changes in 30 days, how's it going to impact the university-based programs and our students in our districts?
So each, and Aaron, Legal, Joe, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but each time if there's a substantive change, we have to restart that process.
So we would, so we have a current policy that we would have to work from. So there currently is a policy in place that talks about how students are enrolled in university-based programs. So we would just revert back to that policy until we can get a new policy in place.
Once we change the policy though, are we going to then remove or what's the impact on the schools and the programs if we change this 30 days or 60 days from now?
So the placement won't change and the IDEA Part B funding piece, we, that's the federal part.
Right.
We have no control over that. But again, those MAAP teacher units, that's not going to change. We're going to continue to fund them in the exact same manner that we have in the past. So there's no reduction to them in that. In fact, we strengthened the language and made it a little bit broader and flexible so that it gave us the authority to work with them on those teacher units and the funding. So that won't change, nor will the MAAP transportation funds that they've been receiving.
So for clarification, just to make sure we all heard that correctly and to Mr. Miller's point, until the new policy, whatever that may be, becomes effective, the old policy as it currently is operational will continue. And so there shouldn't be any interruption in services until this new policy comes into effect.
So there should not be any interruption. This policy however, has not been followed. I think, you know, Matt, that's part of the conversation that we had. The current policy, as I looked at the policies that were being implemented in the Office of Special Education, they weren't being implemented appropriately. And that was one of the reasons that there needed to be clarification on the policy. Because it, the policy that's currently in place does speak to when there is an organized program in a local school district for students with particular exceptionality, then the university-based program will not enroll a student with that exceptionality from that district in the university-based program, except in the following two situations. The student is enrolled on a private tuition basis or if the local school district initiates a placement because an IEP committee in that district has determined that the organized program in that district is not appropriate for that student, that the university-based program is an appropriate placement for that student and the IEP committee places that student in the university-based program. And then it just says yearly placement decisions relative to whether a handicapped student is to be in, is to be placed in a university-based program by a local district, continue to be the responsibility of that local district. So there's currently a policy in place that speaks to how students are placed in university-based programs.
All right, any other questions or comments on this?
Chair, headlines.
Hey, good morning. Ed, pardon me, pardon me just a minute, can you move, can you? There we go, we're, this.
No, it's, it's a long business. My comments are brief. I just want to say that I do appreciate all of the speakers, very, very deep interest. As Mr. Miller said, as you said, this is a very complex matter. And we started almost back in November, it's been a great deal of work done. And there's a lot of us in service, but we've done our complex things to get the wheel, the back ends and so on. Because Lamontis has done a wonderful job too of working with this, just generally to set. And to Habsburg, the university-based programs too. And we have a lot of great dialogue to elaborate on language, Chris. What, what I would hope that you would seek to do is, as Mr. Miller stated, very important, possibly a task force that can get a lot of these nuances resolved before they go to letter writing, back and forth, and other kinds of things. And we still have things that are possible issues that we can resolve very well with a task force, that's what I'm saying with your question.
Well, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good to see you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes ma'am.
Go ahead.
The federal issue, is there a timeline on that? We're trying to, if one piece of this involves the federal guidance, that involves the funding from the federal guidance, are they aware that we're continuing to extend this conversation?
So the federal guidelines like that has stopped. Those allocations that the school districts just received, the university-based programs were not included in that allocation. Because once we learned that you had to be a local, an LEA, local educational agency in order to receive those funds, they were no longer included in that allocation. And we included those students in the December 1 count. We returned those students back to their home school districts manually. We recorded that information so that when the districts place those students in the university-based program, then there's, those funds would have been allocated appropriately to the school districts.
To Mr. Miller and Mr. McDee's point, the local school districts have the right to do what they need to do in the short term to make sure we don't, those students don't lose funding in their UPP environment.
It is a local school district decision.
And then it also makes it important that we expedite this to make sure that we are in compliance and don't get the.
Yes.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve going back out for public comment. So do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Item, I tell you, we're going to alter our agenda. And, and Micah Hill has joined us. She, Micah is our newest representative and she's here with us and she has her report. So if you all don't mind, we're going to let Michael give her report before we move on with the rest of our agenda.
All right.
You're going to have to pull that close to you, Mike, if you can. There you go.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
First of all, good morning. It's good being here, good seeing everybody, thank you.
You're going to have to speak up a little.
Lean into the mic.
And speak pretty distinctly, there you go.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So COVID-19 has really made us point out the needs of students in our state. And specifically what's not as efficient anymore. For example, during the COVID-19 pandemic, we were no longer able to meet in person because it wasn't as efficient concerning to our health and safety at the time. And education was a big question, how we function as a school, how will teachers keep teaching, how will we reach our students? And as much as I would think it was as big of a concern as it was for us, as it was for other school districts, it was not. As you may know from my interview, my brother Samuel went to the Mississippi School for Mathematics and Science, just like Ms. Amy Zhang. And he graduated this year and will be attending the University of Southern Mississippi to major in applied computer science. Well, he was a student that went through the pandemic and experienced it. And I was wondering about how his technology was in his school district. I was wondering if he got his technology because of COVID-19 like we did. But he explained to me that they already had their technology issued out to them at the beginning of the school year, meaning they already had it at the beginning of the pandemic. And I wish I could say the same. Today I'm going to be discussing technology in my school district, pre-COVID, during COVID and post-COVID. So because the pandemic came, before the pandemic came, technology wasn't really a big topic in my school district, mostly because there was nothing that was dramatically holding us back from pursuing our education. You know, we would come to school, receive our in-person instruction and go about our day. But little do we all know that in early March, schools were shut down around our, around our state and administrators, teachers and local board members would have to find creative ways to continue our education. Well, in April of 2020, we. In April 2020, we used packets to finish our school year. Basically, in this graphic, you can see this was put out to all of our Laurel High School. high school social media pages telling us where to get our packets, who to contact, when to get our packets, et cetera. And in the next picture, you can also see some administrators and teachers, um, giving out packets. And notice like the long line, yeah, those, uh, those are horrible. We would have to, basically, sometimes you would have to wait a really long time to get the packets. Um, once you got the packets, you would go, uh, you'd go have your student fill it out and then you have to drive all the way back to the school to turn it in, so the teachers would, um, would have to grade it. But anyway, we used those packets for the rest of the school year and there are some school districts that weren't even, uh, able to finish out our school, their school year because, you know, instances where, uh, students won't have internet, so I'm just very grateful that we found a way to continue our education because we weren't able to provide the virtual learning option at the time. But you know, summer came and then there's August and the school district start, uh, school year started. And, um, finally, in November of twenty twenty, we had, um, Chromebooks given out. And, um, in the graphic, you can basically see where to pick up your Chromebooks. And, um, this was just the first time that our school district ever had Chromebooks accessible for every student in grades first through twelve. And I was just very excited to even have a device that was designated for school because we've never had that before. But we were advised to bring it with us, you know, any day that we were scheduled to come to school. And, um, in our middle and high school, we use different platforms to continue our education, like Edge Annuity, Canvas, Google Classroom, and Remind, so counselors will remind us of upcoming events concerning us. Uh, and I was, um, from this experience, well, although we had the resources at the time, you know, there were lots of failures with, um, teachers that didn't have as much exposure to the technology world and so therefore couldn't pursue the virtual learning option, which hindered students' education. And this mostly came up because of lack of instruction. And this was mostly visible for teachers that had been teaching twenty-plus years because there hasn't been that, um, training in place. But although with all the ups and downs that the pandemic brought, or even with, uh, the technology, I would have to say, and other students as well in my school district, that we really appreciated the virtual learning option because it was self-paced. And, uh, we didn't have to worry about other students' paces, disruptions in the classroom, if any. And, uh, we could basically have the flexibility to go about our day without having to worry about missing instruction because we could always go back to it later, which is awesome. Uh, this past year, we were even wondering like, what if we could take it a step further? What if we could get an extra class out the way, one or two classes out the way, um, so we can get more credits? Or if we wanted to go even farther, like, what if we could take a class that wasn't available in our school district? You know, all the opportunities that online classes brought to us really opened up doors and I'm just very grateful for that. And you know, this wouldn't be mandatory, um, if it was available, because I know some students that just work better in the competitive environment with the teacher in front and classmates around, I understand that because I'm a ver- I'm a visual learner. Um, but when you have the opportunity to go beyond that, beyond the traditional learning path and, um, really like go, uh, ex- ex- expand your knowledge in learning, I think it would be ultimately beneficial for all students in Mississippi. And I am happy where we're, where, where my, uh, school district is now with technology and I'm grateful for the local board members, the meetings, et cetera, so we can get the funding for these Chromebooks because now we can take our, our education in the, at another level. And we now have the chance to give more students, um, opportunities in education and we should capitalize on this advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, very, very good report, we appreciate, we're glad to have you here with us. We'll go back to our, uh, regular agenda now, we're on item two, uh, it's an action item to establish, um, state board policy, school-wide and district-wide virtual learning days. Uh, Dr. Vanderford and Dr. Oakley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, with your permission, um, we would like to take items two and three together since they are.
Okay.
Both associated with virtual learning. Um, the backup material for both items is behind item two. We received a total of thirty-four comments regarding the virtual learning.
You speak a little louder.
Yeah. We received a total of thirty-four comments that were associated with the virtual learning policies and those are in a summary chart for you behind tab, um, two. Based on the public comments, um, we are requesting that the board approve minor changes to both policies, which we will discuss with you throughout this presentation. Um, at this time, we'll walk through some of the overarching themes that we received, um, related to the public comments or even the questions that we received through phone calls for clarifications that did not result in the submission of a public comment. A few of the comments were very clear, that they were in support of the virtual learning policies. The majority of the other comments were clear that the districts were in support of the policies, however, there were a number of questions and clarifications that they were seeking, um, as a result of the comment period. Um, so overall, um, we'll walk through, um, nine or ten, um, overarching themes, the first being that districts were requesting additional flexibility related to the policies, um, particularly around the three hundred and thirty minutes requirements for instruction for virtual learners and the one hundred and eighty days. And unfortunately, the dis- uh, the M D E is not able to allow these additional flexibilities because the three hundred and thirty-minute requirement for instruction and the one hundred and day, one hundred and eighty-day requirement for instruction, both are in state statute, so we do not have the authority to provide flexibility there. Um, the, the state law for the one hundred and eighty days of instruction does require that both students and teachers are present, so that, um, relates back to some of the comments that they were requesting flexibility for asynchronous instruction in which a teacher would not, uh, be present for that, um, time period. Um, one of the other comments, or the, the second comment, was, uh, there appeared to be a lot of confusion, particularly related to alternative schools and the learning opportunities for credit recovery. So we've, we are trying to clarify that rule fifty-six point one that was already in place, um, related to virtual online instruction, primarily in alternative school settings, credit recovery settings, et cetera, that were already provided by vendors that were on the approved, um, M O C A list or the Mississippi Online Course Application Process that's required by M D E. That is still in place. So what districts were allowed to do prior to the pandemic, under rule fifty-six point one, those options are still there for districts. These, these policies under chapter nine, rule nine point three and chapter fifty-six, rule fifty-six point two does not impact those opportunities that were currently there in rule fifty-six point one in any way. So Dr. Oakley and I both have had to have, uh, we've had numerous questions and phone calls and, and we've made that clarification, so I want that to be clear, um, today, that that's still an option. Well, a lot of questions around the section that this is not to circumvent disciplinary practices. So we just want to be clear that if a student is suspended and a district wants to provide instruction to a student that has been suspended, um, based on their local board policy, if their local board policy allows suspended students to continue to receive instruction through a virtual option, that's allowable, all based on local board policy. But that student still has to be reported as suspended in the student package and to M D E, you know, in M S I S. Um, questions around students that are pending expulsion hearings, if a local school district policy states that that student that is pending the outcome of the hearing should receive, continue to receive instruction and that be virtual, that's allowable. However, if the outcome of that expulsion hearing is that the student is expelled, then the student should be reported as expelled and then dis- the instruction should be discontinued because an expelled student is not required to receive instruction, um, in the public school setting. Um, asynchronous, the requirement of questions around asynchronous instruction, that goes back to the law. The law says one hundred and eighty days of instruction, three hundred and thirty minutes of instruction of actual teaching where both students and teachers are engaged, that eliminates our ability to say that virtual learning could be one hundred percent asynchronous instruction. Now, there is a caveat to that outlined in rule nine point three that would be related to any school-wide or virtual-wide, I mean, school-wide or district-wide virtual learning day. Policy nine point three does allow districts to identify students that do not have access or to connectivity, to meet the connectivity requirements that, that's set forth by the local school board, um, to allow those students to have those days one hundred percent asynchronous and be provided an assignment to complete. But that, that exception is only with district-wide, school-wide virtual learning days under rule nine point three. We also, um, have had a number of calls and, and some comments, um, related to the local district policy and what they, um, parents, um, and staff already know is going to be either presented to their local board for approval or has already been approved by the board. And so we've just reiterated, um, in our responses that rule nine point three and rule fifty-six point two is optional for local districts, they do not have to provide that one hundred percent virtual option for students in fifty-six point two. And if a district's local policy is to provide one hundred percent virtual learning only to students, for example, that may have health issues, then that's a local district policy. These policies are optional and, and how a local district determines to implement these policies, if they choose to implement them, is a local district authority and M D E does not have any control over that. Um, some questions came in about the hybrid model because if you recall, when we resumed instruction after the pandemic, we, uh, the M D E offered a, uh, traditional, a hybrid or a virtual option for students. Um, but these policies that, um, have been approved under a temporary rule eliminate the hybrid option. We had a number of districts express concern that they wanted to continue to have the option to, for the hybrid option, so while they were benchmark testing or statewide testing or had other things going on in their district that they could assign half of their population, for example, for virtual learning and have half the population, um, resume in person for testing. But these policies do eliminate that hybrid option, the combinations thereof. So we are, um, not making any recommendations to the board to change that. So with these policies that were approved last month as a temporary rule to be effective immediately, only allow for students to either be in person one hundred percent of the time, with the exception of the district needing to convert to a district-wide or school-wide virtual learning day, or the virtual learning option, which would be one hundred percent virtual students in a program. So no hybrid option there. So had a lot of questions, comments, but we are not making any recommendations, um, to continue with any type of hybrid of in-person and, and virtual. Um, we want to emphasize that virtual learning programs are held to the same standards as in-person learning. Um, the leadership team is very adamant that students receive equivalent instruction, whether they be, uh, in-person, um, face-to-face, or into the virtual program. So we're looking for that equity of instruction, um, there. Uh, clarification around the, the prior notice or the twenty-five, I mean, the twenty-four hour notice, so the policy didn't actually require, we may have said, or it appeared that we were seeking a twenty-four hour notice, but it, it, we have made some clarifications, um, or recommending some clarifications that the board approved to rule nine point three, that's in your backup material under item two on page ninety-six, um, that the districts just received prior notice. And the intent is that, of that, is we have some districts that have policies that prohibit students from taking their devices home. And we have some districts that have policies that may, um, prohibit K through three or K through four students taking their devices home, but they allow that in grades four through twelve or five through twelve. So you can't convert to a virtual learning day at five o'clock the day of if you have a district policy that prohibits students from taking their devices home. So advance notice would be required the day before in anticipation of a virtual learning day, the districts would have to allow those students to take the devices home. Otherwise, you just can't convert to a virtual learning day if devices are at the school. So we've clarified that intent is that that prior notice is required so that devices can be issued to students if you have a policy that prohibits them from taking the devices home every day. Um, and if it's not prior notice, then districts would have to fall back on the law for weather days where state statute provides districts the opportunity to have up to ten weather days without making those days up. That's what the districts would have to utilize if they do not provide the prior notice and the students have the devices needed for a virtual day. Also, um, if a district, and we've talked about this, but if a district converts to a virtual learning day, um, under the weather, um, for weather purposes and then there's no electricity, then the district would either have to make the decision to go back and make up that day or to count that weather-related day under the statute that re- allows districts to be forgiven for those days. Um, a lot of comments around actual teaching, what the definition of actual teaching is. Actual teaching is the language directly from the state law and, um, actual teaching is just engaged in instruction, either synchronous or asynchronous instruction. Um, and that's allowable, asynchronous and synchronous instruction is allowable both in, um, face-to-face settings and virtual, uh, learning settings. So one of the recommendations that we're making for clarification is, um, under item three on page two of the backup, um, under rule fifty-six point two, just to be clear that virtual learning students are, um, and in-person students are both allowed synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And then there were some questions around, um, the district policies and whether or not the parents have to sign a commitment, um, for virtual learning under both policies. And, and we have clarified that the answer to that is yes, that the minimum requirements for a local board policy is outlined in, um, item three under the backup material for rule fifty-six point two. And we list what at a minimum a local board policy shall be, um, shall contain, and local board policies are required to be adopted, published, and made publicly available. And part of those minimum requirements is that a parent, um, sign if the student is not age-appropriate, the commitment to virtual learning, whether those days occur one hundred percent virtual, in a virtual program, or if those days are under policy nine point three for district-wide and school-wide virtual learning. So I'm sorry for it to be lengthy, but we did want to walk through some of the concerns, um, that were outlined and just emphasize that our goal as a leadership team is to provide those opportunities, um, that are equivalent for virtual and, um, in-person learning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments or questions on Dr. Vanderford's presentation? Dr. Oakley, do you have anything?
Okay.
Mr.?
Glenn, can you lean into your mic?
Yeah. Go through this in layman's terms and just, if I misspeak, please correct. Uh, I have had very few phone calls on this, too. My colleague from the north has had many, so I just want to make sure, and I think you said it, but I want to kind of make sure that we're on the same page. A school district will have a face-to-face instruction and they can also have a virtual academy or a virtual. and they can also have a virtual academy or a virtual situation for 100% of the time. In that virtual situation, it is 180 days of instruction. It is 330 minutes a day. It is lesson plan-driven, just like it would be for face-to-face. There can be a virtual introduction, a virtual lecture, or a virtual conversation with students. They can break them out into small groups. It can be virtual and/or asynchronous depending on the work, as long as they're doing that 330 minutes of instruction. Am I good so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're also saying in this policy is that if in the northern part of this state, there's a prediction for an ice storm or a snowstorm that may close a school district down, they can in fact send home devices, prepare for that storm, and then can go virtually if they have the power or the asynchronous work to do during that time, and it can be counted as instruction.
That's correct, but under under Policy 9.3, when we convert to district-wide or school-wide, the asynchronous 100%, the packets are only allowable for those students that the district has identified that does not have access to the connectivity.
So if my lights are out, we're in trouble whether it goes that way or not.
That's that's correct.
It can also be applied to one school, Dr. Vandenberg. So let's say that we have a tornado go through and one school is not able to return to face-to-face. That district could then set up and run a virtual piece for that one building that our kids cannot get back to.
Yes, sir, that would be identified under the school-wide Rule 9.3.
So basically, we're saying that we we we're promoting a virtual component if the school district chooses to do so and follow the same rules, basically, that you have in a face-to-face, 330 minutes, 180 days.
Correct. The only thing I would like to clarify is that in order to do that, a district must have a local board policy that outlines the minimum requirement in Rule 56.3, 56.2. They do not have to have a 100% virtual program if they elect not to, but they still have to have a virtual policy that meets the minimum requirements outlined in 56.2 to be able to operate that district-wide and school-wide virtual learning option.
And that is in this policy that has to go before the board, it has to be approved, and so everybody in the district.
Yes, sir. Rule 9.3 references back to the minimum requirements outlined in 56.2. So you would have to have a local board policy that's published, I mean, adopted, published, made publicly available. Parents, if they have students that are not age-appropriate, to sign that virtual learning commitment that meets the district requirements, that's that's still all required under 9.3.
Yes, ma'am. And if we have a COVID outbreak and a district has to shut down, they could plug in the same virtual component, making sure they have 330 minutes of instruction and whatever days there are missed, unlike we did. And Dr. Tesco in the back, and we learned a lot from this. Unlike we did when we were just trying to get through and make the connections. It has to be, if they have to shut down, it has to be that virtual model of where that teacher is working a lesson plan for the same 330 minutes of instruction.
Held to.
That's the biggest shift.
Yes, sir.
The way we all kind of did it, not knowing what was going on in life and where we're trying to get to for the perfection of the education and making sure our kids are.
And and, you know, we'll continue to emphasize that's held to the same standards that your in-person students are receiving and to the same evaluation criteria. I failed to state that earlier. We did have a question about how are you going to evaluate virtual learning programs? Well, we're going to evaluate them the same way that we evaluate in-person programs. We're going to ensure you have 330 minutes, 180 days, lesson plans that follow the the curriculum guidelines, et cetera. So same evaluation criteria as well.
I have a question. I'm new, so I may be asking something that is totally obvious. However, I don't get internet access where I live. I have to do, I use a hotspot. But what about these kids that, do we provide them, if we provide them with Chromebooks and things, do we provide them with hotspots? I mean, how long are they going to access?
This this may be a question more for John Kramer, our CIO, but I can give you a little context. So through Mississippi Connects over the last year, the legislative appropriation, there was a portion of that money that went to devices. And at the same time, there was a portion of that money went to, for the short-term connectivity, for hotspots, for Wi-Fi-enabled buses that could park at an apartment complex to address some of the connectivity issues. It does not solve the issue long-term, but for the short-term, trying to to bridge that gap with a longer view toward more widespread internet access in the state.
Thank you.
But in addition to that, I want to add that there is all kinds of federal money that has now arrived, and districts have access to federal dollars in order to continue to purchase hotspots, build cell towers, put Wi-Fi in buses, whatever that case might be. So there's additional money that's coming for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I I want to close by saying it was a very, it was a committee, it was very well done. We, there was a lot of discourse, a lot of conversation, but I think we really have come out with a very strong plan to make virtual education viable but also continue strong face-to-face instruction as we need it. Last closing remark. I appreciate the fact that that we can acknowledge that if we suspend a child, they can still be gaining education in a virtual component. It is just the recording of the fact that they are suspended, they cannot be counted as present.
That's right.
So it does not keep us from taking a child's educational chance away. We've just changed their environment, but the code's going to require us to mark it as suspended or expelled, whatever we would have to do.
That if, I mean, because if we circumvent those discipline reporting requirements, then the agency as well as the district, I mean, we would be out of compliance with federal and state reporting requirements.
My closing thing is, and that goes right back to those reports. We have to do that every year on the federal level to make sure that we're being frank or honest or whatever the case may be on where those children really are in the disciplinary lab. The committee worked hard, I was on that committee, as Dr. McGee, he asked me about the other day, and there was another superintendent from the northern part of the state. There was a lot of good discourse, a lot of good conversations about this. Very proud of the work that that group did. Nothing's ever perfect on the first time around, but I think we've addressed the issues so that we can have a strong program in our state, so thank you very much.
And I was going to say that. We we may be back, I mean, after one year of implementation and evaluation of of these policies, and and we may ask the board to make some additional revisions, you know, following. But until we implement it for a school year, we we won't know what needs to be tweaked, for lack of a better term.
Good job, thank you.
Well, the the shining light that's come out of all that we've been through this last year is this, that you can have a child who has, we we prefer face-to-face. I mean, that's the best of the world.
Right.
But it does offer an opportunity for any extenuating circumstance, medical, weather-related, whatever, to still have school. And the good point that Mr. East made is those children who, for whatever reason, get suspended or or expelled or not out on the street as they've been in the past, they can still go to school, they just maybe are not in the building. So it it answers a lot of issues that we have had to deal with in the past. So we appreciate your work. Anybody else have any comments?
A question for Dr. Vandenberg regarding, I would assume that we're going to communicate directly with all our school districts about these clarifications.
Yes, sir. They're they're posted online, but but we will send a final notice with the revised policy.
Could uh, could we not just email the superintendents and make sure everybody receives that?
Oh, yes, sir, we can do that.
I think they would enjoy that.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Vand, do you have any comments?
I was just going to briefly just point out, I noticed the the addition, it was just a sentence that said that virtual students and in-person students should have, I guess, the equal amount of synchronous and asynchronous learning. And I think that that's very important for equity. And I got a couple of calls about that, about districts who are offering both this year, having just differences in how they were offering instruction to students. And so I I really appreciate that being in there. And then just to echo what y'all already said about just this great opportunity for us to learn about, you know, the effectiveness of of both models. And I hope that looking forward, we can look and see how our students who were 100% virtual, how their outcomes compare to our in-person students.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you for all that work and your presentation. On Item 2, do we have a motion to approve State Board policy regarding school-wide and district-wide virtual learning?
Motion to approve, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Item 3, there's no other comments to make on Item 3 you've covered.
No, ma'am, we, unless you have any questions, we compiled the APA comments together.
All right, then we'll entertain a motion to approve Item 3, which is identifying virtual students. Do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve, Madam Chairman.
Second? Did I hear a second?
Karen.
Oh, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, we appreciate that. Item 4 is, has been pulled, so we'll move to Item 5. This is an informational item on the American Rescue Plan, Dr. Oakley.
Thank you. We're bringing forward, just as a matter of information for you today, the state's American Rescue Plan. It's in response to the latest round of federal funding. That's a requirement of U.S. Department of Ed that each state submit a plan. And over the last year, we've been in frequent contact through through virtual call, through some face-to-face meetings with district leaders, school-level leaders, students across the state, teachers across the state, others. As a result of these meetings and other feedback, we are focusing, really, our work and the use of these federal funds on several different key initiatives. We've heard very clearly from districts that quality, grade-level instruction is essential to our students moving forward. And so we're we're looking at supporting those efforts. We've already adopted high-quality materials. We've moved forward with supplemental adoption of some interventions for academic supports for students. The board has approved those, both for academics and behavior. We also are focusing on accelerated learning through after-school programs, through summer programs. And then also, how we can as a as a state support districts is they provide stable, safe, nurturing environments for students, addressing their social-emotional needs, addressing mental health, behavioral health concerns. Dr. White spoke earlier to some of the work that's going on with telehealth in the state. We're hosting a counselor conference later this month that's focused on some of those key aspects that that counselors play in their work with students. But ultimately, this this plan lays out some of the work we've already done with Mississippi Connects around device acquisition, as well as the support we're providing going forward through digital learning coaches and through professional development opportunities for teachers that that are ongoing and the coaching support that's launching this fall. And then there's some language in the plan that that gets at how some of the previous funds, GEAR's funds, were used and gets at how we're we're trying to capture student attendance as we shift to a refinement of our MCIS system in future years. And then how we'll be providing, again, the summer learning supports, after-school supports, to different subgroups of students that have specific needs. This action, this this item does not require action on your part. Just wanted to bring it forward to you and let you know that this has been in the works and that we will be finalizing and subsequently submitting to it in in the coming days.
Okay, thank you for that information. Item 6 is approval of State Department grants, I mean, contracts first, and then we'll do grants. Dr. Gavin?
Good morning. We have one contract that we're bringing forth today for the board's approval, and it's an emergency contract with Cambian, and it's a one-year contract. This contract, these services did go out for BIP and RFP, but due to some issues with the vendors replying, we're we were not able to move forth with that. So we're bringing forth the board, to the board, an emergency contract for one year with Cambian.
All right, do you have any questions about this? Do we have a motion to approve this contract, Item 6A?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 7, which is grants?
Yes, we have one grant that we're seeking approval from the board on today, and that is our Mississippi Community Oriented Policy Services in Schools Grant, better known as MCOPS. We are requesting approval for 1,600,000 for 160 resource officers. All resource officers that were requested did meet the criteria, so we're requesting approval for those. And we will have a second round of MCOP grants later this year as well.
I think everybody's familiar with this. Any questions on it? All right, then we'll entertain a motion for to approve this.
So moved.
Okay, Dr. McGee, he's second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dr. Gavin, Item 8 is the preliminary recalculation of MAEP.
Yes, we're seeking approval for the recalculation of base student costs for MAEP. And we have to recac, this is a recalculation year. The student base cost has to be recalculated by law every four, four years. So this has been done by the certified accountant as well as through the Office of School Financial Services. So we're requesting approval of the 2122 student base cost of $6,220.51.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this recalculation? Down to the penny?
Second.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Item 9 is the preliminary calculation of MAEP.
Yes, we have recalculated the the estimated MAEP cost for FY '23, and this is based on the new student base cost that we, you just approved. So our preliminary estimate, as you know, we come back in December for final improvement, approval of the MAEP calculation. But the preliminary estimate is $2,705,560,475.
All right, anybody have any questions on that? Then I'll entertain a motion that we approve the preliminary calculation for MAEP. So moved, okay. Second, Mr. Jacobs?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and Item 10 is the approval of the fiscal year '23 budget request.
There is, there is no change other than we have updated our request to include the updated MAEP estimate. So we're seeking approval for us to submit to the Legislative Budget Office our FY '23 budget request of $3,235,43,172. And the only difference, as noted, is the updated MAEP estimate. So there's, there are no other additional changes than what you saw at the board retreat in last month.
Any questions?
Dr. Gavin, I would assume that would be asking for full funding, is that correct?
Correct, that is full funding of MAEP with the adjusted, with the revised, recalculated student base cost. That's full, that's our full funding request.
Motion to approve this budget request?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda, Items A, B, C, D, and E. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jacobs? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to F, it'd been pulled and I quit. I'm sorry, so we're approving A through J, minus F. I'm sorry, I didn't go far enough down the page. We got to get Dr. Elon back to Oxford, so we're hurrying. So we do have a motion and a second for all the items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm dropping you off here, I can't hear you, so. Now we need to entertain a motion that we consider executive session.
I move that the board consider making a close determination of the need to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We ask that, what, yeah, so the leadership team, everyone else needs to clear the room, please. needs to, clear the room, please.